They're not for a good. Something like on six months.
He called, he called this. And I worked on making it together.
You give your back.
Thank you, Ryan. That's for warning basically. And so you make run and run, man. Now you've been there for five to nine minutes. They keep a copy, you give them a copy, you give them a copy. So next time we run the ticket. We kind of get somewhere. I don't know, but if you get your copy, I'm not. They definitely also have our government. If I stay in there, maybe it's something.
Sure.
You can say they also pay.
Well, I'm from, I'm from, I'm from.
Yeah, I'm ready. I, I, that's where I'm, I was, I was.
I'm gonna go down there.
That's just the first. I'm there. Stay. Sure. I just never had to study.
Figure it out. Hey, what are you doing, buddy? You're doing okay?
Ladies and gentlemen.
One of the.
Okay, so.
Member. Chief.
Yeah.
But.
Too well.
We're from chief. Well, maybe chief.
Yeah. Great, great. I'm overrated.
I just want to, I just knocked it out.
Yeah. You know, I wanted to.
Sure.
Yeah. The thing.
Small boy.
We are well, and, and we.
That's right. Thank you guys.
How you doing?
How are you?
How you doing? Think we're gonna make practice tonight? Uh? Yeah. So long. Oh, yeah, still, oh, yeah. Hey, Chris.
That's good.
We're great.
Yeah.
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 The match still not good. I'm afraid I don't get it.
No?
Does he have? I saw it.
Morning. Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be laying in a word of prayer by David Farmer. Everybody standing for our pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today in many places, Father. I just thank you for this day. And thankful that you've allowed us to come to be a part of this meeting this morning. Ask that you be with these commissioners as they make important decisions from you and Van Zant County. And Father, as we are anticipating a potential winter storm coming in later today, we just ask that you watch over all of us. If we have to get out and travel, just give us safe travel to and from our destinations. Be with all of our emergency responders during this time as well. Father, I just. Ask now that you watch over us as we carry on with our responsibilities each and every day, forgive us of our sins. All this, we pray in your name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, February the second, twenty twenty-two. At nine oh one AM. Now it's formally established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes. Uh, of the meetings of the Commissioners Court and approval of same for December the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, January the fifth, twenty twenty-two, and January the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Like I told y'all, I do not have the minutes ready today. So I think second day that we've had a full staff back since December. So I have the first set actually typed up, but not, I've had no one review them. So usually I'll review them before the long Commissioners Court. So we will have them ready for the next Commissioners Court, including the minutes from today.
Okay.
Motion table.
Got a motion to table by Commissioner Milton. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any question, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. So got a motion by Commissioner West. Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion on the bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for ratifying? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General business, is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements?
I just want to remind you about our HR director.
Oh, that's right. Uh, they, uh, we've got a new HR director, replaced Dan Masiere. Uh, uh, Jessica DeVille. You've been, when did you come in, Jessica?
Morning, buddy.
There you go.
I'm Jessica, real high started here on some point that. And I've loved it so far and just wanted to be here.
Yeah. And doing a great job. She's gonna do a great job. Thank you, Jessica. We just wanted to embarrass you. Our weekends off. Yeah. Yeah. She has been a great, great job. We are, I've been on the phone this morning with our emergency management coordinator. We're monitoring the weather. I would. Uh, remind all the employees and department heads that, you know, uh, that if anything changes, if there's any notifications, we have the employee notification hotline. Uh, and I'll be updating that as, as, as we get through this, with the more information. But they have included Van Zant County. Uh, with a half inch ice, uh, up to a half inch. And, and so we're all just, of course, all the employees, you start getting a phone call two days ahead. Are we gonna be shut down Thursday and Friday? Call the number. So any other announcements or questions?
Yeah, uh, just a reminder, road and bridge don't shut in. We're, we're out there.
Yes.
Probably both starts February fourteenth. It's, it'll be for two weeks. Hours are subject to change. The state has changed some of the hours. So everything is posted on the website for right now. And just kind of keep checking that. Next court will let y'all know where we're at on that.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Reminder again, we have the, uh, the day we create the Whitton Community Center on twelve.
That's right. What time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock on the twelfth. Uh, candidate meet and greet form. They're at Whitton Community Center.
No soft calls.
Okay, we'll move to item number six, uh, public comments. We have him. Okay, we do have one person, David Donegan, that would like to speak on. Item number two. Uh, Mr. Donegan, you may speak.
First of all, I'll say, um, I do appreciate how open the court has been whenever, at least me as a citizen, just needed information and things like that. Um, and so as a citizen, I'm always very concerned about the transparency with court and all that. So it, it does. I understand you had a lot of difficulties with staffing and everything else. But it does concern me that we're already back to December twenty-second without those meeting minutes. And I just, as a citizen, would like to express my concern.
Okay. Well. You have three minutes. They are, thank, thank you, David. Thank you. Uh, I'd, Susan and I had spoken this morning. Uh, it's a concern for, I think, the whole court.
And. And myself. I mean, honestly.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't usually run that far behind, but.
Yeah.
You know, I also do, uh, books in there. And I mean, the, the whole daily schedule, I can't just stop and type the minutes. I mean, I try to do them every day, but I can tell you yesterday. I did nothing but try to work on those and nothing but phone calls. I mean, it's just crazy busy. And if you don't have your full staff there. You know, court is still going. We're still processing the paperwork. So, but, but I do get it.
Okay. Anyone else? Scott? Okay. Item number seven, presentation of Matt Russo with Grant Works of TDA Form A one zero. Two, four, uh, Community Development Block Grant Section Three Goes and Concepts as related to the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the grant contract number seven, two, two, zero, four, eight, zero. Uh-oh, he's muted.
Can you hear me?
Okay, maybe the bite. Yeah, there's. That's all right. We have to do that during court because we get all the feedback.
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, thank you for having me this morning. Um, recently, TDA has revised their Section Three policy. And as a result, one of the, uh, new stipulations is we need to, uh, present a, um, Section Three presentation to the, um, Commissioners Court. And so, um, the, uh, Van Zant County recently received a grant, um, grant number seven, two, two, zero, four, eight, zero, for two hundred and seventy-five thousand. The project is to install new water distribution lines to improve water pressure and increase capacity. The grant itself is funded through the Community Development Block Grant via the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the Texas Department of Agriculture. Excuse me. Uh, as a condition of funding, the county must comply with Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of nineteen sixty-eight. And to the greatest extent feasible, grant recipients must direct economic opportunities generated by CDBG funds to low and very low income persons. And so, um, what that means is that we must ensure that Section Three businesses, uh, have the information to submit a bid or proposal for the project. And Section Three workers have information about any available job opportunities related to the project. And if you want a precise definition, um, TDA has the, um, T, or the Texas CDBG Policy Issuance twenty dash zero one on their website. The, uh, so I'll go over what makes Section Three business and then also what makes a Section Three worker. A, um, company may qualify as a Section Three business if it is owned by low income persons, is owned by Section Eight Assisted Housing Residents. Or if seventy-five percent of all labor hours for the business in a three-month period are performed by Section Three worker. And a business can register, uh, their status at the HUD Section Three website. And there's also a form at the TDA website that, um, they may certify as a Section Three business. And so this project in particular, um, I'll go over what makes a Section Three person, uh, in a minute. Uh, this project is expected to include, um, three contracting opportunities, which have already been, um, selected. Uh, by the time. TDA has, uh, put out this policy, we've already chosen, um, our grant administration service, our engineering service, and our prime contractor. So the, um, Section Three worker, uh, they may qualify if their annual income is below the county threshold for their family size. And so the annual income for a family of one right now is thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty. Or if you are a current or recent youth go participant. And you could register this information and search for opportunities at workingTexas.gov and HUD's, uh, Section Three Opportunity Portal as well. So the, um, what's, one of the updates to the policy is they are now targeting Section Three workers. Which, uh, means they are looking for people that live in a specific area to work on this project. And so, um, what we do is we take where the job site is, and then we go out one mile radius, and that's the, um, the service area that we're looking for. And so, excuse me, um, the county will track all hours working the project based on three categories of workers. And this will be done with, um, with us. Our labor team will work with the contractor to determine the status of the, of the workers. And, um, so they'll look at all the workers, and then within that, they'll look at Section Three workers, and then within that, they'll look at the targeted Section Three workers. And we'll report that information to TDA. And that is, um. That's all I have. Any remaining questions? If you need a, a copy of this presentation, I believe I, um, emailed it to, um. Somebody. Uh, Chris, yeah, Chris Taylor.
Right. And she, she got it too. Everyone has a copy of it in their books here.
Okay.
And so we do, we do have a copy of the presentation.
All right.
Does that cover the requirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to have any questions? For Matt? Sandy, do you have any, any, no questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We, we, you need me to sign anything?
Nope, I just need a copy of the minutes to show that the presentation was done.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No action on item number seven? We'll move to item number eight, discuss and approve Van Zant County Historical Commission, uh, twenty twenty-one year-end report. Uh, Elvis Allen's here. Did you want to present that report, Elvis?
I have presented.
Yeah, okay, okay. We do. Do what? Uh, yeah, it's, it, we, we all have it, have a copy of it. Uh, you did a great job, uh, working around the COVID. Uh. Is any highlights you would?
Uh, no, except we were surprised how susceptible we have been here with the COVID and, uh, other drawbacks, you know, that the, uh. Minus four degrees and breaking of the backs and our, our, uh, almost being.
Yeah. Yeah. If coffee, well, thank you, Elvis. Thank you for, for the job you guys do. And, uh, I know you. Is there a motion, is there a motion to approve the report? I got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, a second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion for Elvis? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and approve Van Zant County Emergency Service District, uh, ESD number four, financial statement for the year. Uh, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. You have the report before you.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, audit, their annual audit and financial statement from the ESD over in Willpoint. Uh, it all looks good for me, as far as me, I think, for the, my promotion to begin inter distance of the minutes as a record.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider and accept the donation of the Van Zant County Master Gardeners Club for the labor to be completed at the courthouse and DA's office. For landscaping the grounds per local government code eighty-one point zero three two. I did talk to Joe, Joe present. Joe's not for, I talked to Joe this morning. He said he would like to table that out. Uh, something about the wording, uh, and then he's got another one. He said he's just gonna come back next, the next meeting with, uh. With this and trimming of the trees or a tree situation up there. So he would like to just tie. So I'd make a motion, table item number ten. Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Uh, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider implementing a burn ban for Van Zant County, uh, Van Zant County's, uh, Fire Marshal, uh, Sean is with us. Sean, you may address the court.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, so I, I've given you some information there, uh, just shows our current condition on the first few pages. Uh, and then there's some discussion I, I got off of, uh, Porche Service website. Uh, long story short, it's not recommended right now from Fire Marshal's office for a burn ban. I would like to revisit this commission meeting, commission meeting, uh, upcoming, uh, the, the incoming weather is supposed to severely decrease our chances of any.
Okay.
Severe fires or anything right now. Um, I do understand January's been pretty tough on the law care departments. Uh, and we've had a, just a strangely dry, and we are in a dry time, uh, that's unusual for this time of year, but, uh, this, this weather is supposed to kind of dampen that. And we're just kind of go meeting and meeting for now on, on just, and it just keep. I'll just keep reviewing this weekly and seeing what the recommendation from, uh, Porche Service and everything is and go from there. Uh, spoke with several other fire marshals around surrounding counties. They're, they're the same position as us, uh, just watching it. Nobody's. Who many burn bans right now are considering as well, so.
Okay.
We, we sure don't want to be the island in there.
Okay.
Oh, Judge, I would like to add that I, I spoke with, uh. Eden Fire Department, Ken Fire Department, Edwood Fire Department, Willpoint Fire Department, Golden Oaks Fire Department, all of them advised that at this time, we did not put a burn ban in place, but we look at into it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table for second.
Okay, got a motion to table. Uh, item number land, uh, item number eleven, implementing the burn ban. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, got a second by Commissioner West. Any question, discussion for Sean? Hold tight, we got another item after the, uh. Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. It felt a little awkward putting both these items on there, you know, back to back. And so, but by law, it's, it, by law, we have to come and do this. It has to be approved either up or down. Uh, uh, item number twelve, discuss and consider adopting order authorizing the sale of fireworks, uh, from February twenty-fifth, and that is a typo. It's not from two thousand and two. It's, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, through midnight March of twenty twenty-two for Texas Independence Day. What is your?
That doesn't give me any heartburn. Uh, I'm okay if we want to do that. We cannot change our, our permit fee. We can add to it.
Right.
State caps, it's a hundred dollars per year.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I really don't think that we're gonna see much activity. Uh, I mean, January is, is slow for new year sales anyways, uh, but I really don't see that time of year. I don't think we'll have maybe a couple of stands open, so.
Okay.
Not a problem for mine.
Okay. And if we authorize it, we have to have a motion that has to be the court authorizing the sale. Is there, I mean, is there any discussion, questions, discussion?
I, I've got a question.
Okay.
This is just in general, if, if we are currently under burn ban, we can't stop the sale of fireworks. We can just prohibit the using of it.
Yeah, you can restrict the aerial, uh, fireworks, the rockets and stuff going up. You, you, I don't know that you couldn't. Restrict them.
From selling like.
Yeah.
Give, I mean, I didn't know that can be closed business.
I don't.
The fact that we're under.
That'd be a question, but I do know you can restrict if the weather conditions, you can restrict.
Yes, yeah.
The aerial.
Yeah.
Stuff.
We approve the sale now with all our burn ban. We can come back and stop the aerials at that time.
You can stop the aerials. Oh.
And that's the ones that start to fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially the ones that nobody knows where it comes from, you know, because they landed somewhere else. On that case, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the sale.
Okay.
If the other, you come back and stop it, we're bad.
Okay. Got a motion by, uh, Commissioner Brad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. All in favor of authorizing the sale of fireworks, uh, for Texas Independence Day, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Sean is a Van Zant County Fire Marshal, does a great job. Uh, no one knows how much business is out there and how much is your. It, 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 it's, it's crazy. But, uh, thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approving change order for invoice number two, two, nine, zero, zero, zero. Uh, from con consolidated refresh, refrigeration technologies, uh, due to price increase. Uh, you have the invoice before you, you see what the, you, uh, do you have the email that he sent? Where he said, you know, what they're saying is it appears that between, uh, Ju- June the twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, the bid date. And August the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, the award date, the material costs for CRT, uh, uh, increased, uh, eight percent. You see the invoice there for nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Increase on the air conditioning. But it is a change order. I want me to bring it before the court. Yeah.
Well, we all know what these prices have been doing, so I'm like a motion to accept this.
Yeah, it's no different than rogue material and everything we're doing. I mean, it's, it's on everything now. But have a motion by Commissioner Pearson, got a second by Commissioner Milton. Uh, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approving an interlocal agreement between Van Zant County and East Texas Council of Government, cog works, purch- purchasing cooperative. I don't know who put that on there.
I put it on Edco is starting a, um, new way that we can go in instead of like through buy boards, we can go to this cog works. They're gonna be doing it. Um, and I think it's just our benefit to go ahead and sign up for it. If we never even use it, it, it still needs to be done.
Okay.
But I think that, uh, the pricing, they, they assume or think it's gonna be better than what we can get through anything else. So we'll just see.
Okay, it'd be, uh. Less expensive than buy board?
Well, they're hoping.
Okay.
It's kind of what they're saying. That, that, you know, when the numbers come out, we'll see, but.
Give us another option.
Yeah, that's right.
If you're, you're not locked in, you can buy.
Oh, yeah, we're not locked in at all. All this does is give us permission back from them if we want to.
Okay, Mr. West, is that a motion?
This motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the interlocal agreement, uh, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider applying for criminal justice grant for Edco.
Yes, sir, that'd be me and the sheriff on this one.
Okay.
Essentially what this is, gentlemen, the cog will submit grant.
Essentially what this is, gentlemen, the cog will submit grants. We can submit grants through them for different things that says with the sheriff's office. This particular one is for license plate readers the sheriff would like to get. In order to apply for the grant, we need permission from the court first, and then if we are awarded the grant, we'll come back and get permission from the court to accept the grant proceed forward. I'll let the sheriff present where he'll see what's like that.
So we actually have a person on our staff who's actually a reserve uh, deputy uh, thirty years experience in the ski, came on board just as reserves. We don't pay anything, but he researches grants for us all day. Experience in law enforcement, he's able to thoroughly research them, so I've had him contact Commissioner Brad just to make sure we follow all the rules. We don't want to do anything that circumvent those rules, and so they've been working together on these grants to make sure it's something that would be good for Van Zet County, good for our sheriff's office and and uh, you know, also follow the rules. So, so this one here's a license plate, a license plate readers. And what that does, that gives us the ability to set up a license plate reader on the trailer or a quick deploy license plate reader. And it's vehicles travel past, it's just taking pictures of license plates in front of them. And it tells us if those vehicles are stolen. And lots of other information that is beneficial. For example, we're looking for someone who's missing. Uh, we recently had a missing person and we were able to, to use that, that network and then were a part of it. Someone actually was able to access it. And we tracked that person basically traveling all the way from Texas into California. So we knew they were actually alive. And so it would be beneficial to deploy those and possibly, you know, uh, get some stolen vehicles, possibly some, some drug arrests. I know Ken recently purchased one or within their first week, they were able to make a drug arrest on the vehicle that passed through there and actually seize the hundred thousand dollars cash. We just like permission to, to apply for that grant.
Okay. Any questions for Sheriff?
I know uh, Smith County has at their, their uh, hell, let's see, what, what is it? Jay's the city marshal and he's got one in his truck. And it's, it's the most interesting thing you've ever seen. You sit there and look at it and the car can come be the direction and it'll read that license plate and it'll tell you immediately if any warrants out there, anything else. That's how he gets all his warrants served. He sits there on the road for just a few minutes and pops them off.
They can get a marshal vehicles and get them where you could to deploy on a pole or uh, other ways to just quickly set them up. But the lower most issues, one of the trailer that we can actually even on the highway, even on the market, you put anywhere. And uh, it, it actually will show the person's speed, so as they're passing by, they're basically checking, make sure they're compliant with speed on it at the same time it's taking those pictures.
Any other questions? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any question, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider applying for homeland security grant through East Texas Council of Government.
Yes, sir, this is a similar process. We want to apply through the cog for a grant. This one would put remote dispatch stations in our mobile command unit and upgrade the radio equipment to cover not only the cartridges we work on, but the seven, eight hundred band that we're researching going forward to in the future. And once again, we're just requesting permission to apply. Once awarded, we'll have to come back and get permission to accept.
Okay.
And essentially what we're doing is we're, we're looking ahead. So then, once we switch to the new radio uh, system will have the, the command trailer, the emergency season, say, to talk to on that bandwidth. And at the same time, we don't even have really good dispatch stations in that command unit, so we want to set that up. So in the event that Dr. Ben, the sheriff's office is taken out, then we can deploy that thing when needed and just keep on running. And furthermore, if we have a special event such as another tornado, uh, we can actually separate what we're dispatched with the rest of the county and just dispatch that event out of that, that command post.
And we've been working with Scott and IP on what kind of, what would be necessary to make this functional, operate with our system. Um, make a motion to allow us to apply for grant.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrad, second by Commissioner Melton. Uh, any, any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider applying for Siri, S E R I grant for Edco.
Yes, sir. Once again, this is the same situation. We're requesting permission to apply for the grant. Should we be awarded, we'll come back and request permission to accept it. This grant would be applied for what's called a interrupt gateway. And the radios are allowed to function. Essentially what this piece of equipment does, it allows you to integrate frequencies. So whenever we do go, if we go into the eight hundred system, we'll build a tire existence system into that during transition. And then working in the future, we'll be able to link neighboring counties and neighboring frequencies into our dispatch console to patch frequencies together for common communication. And so we're we're requesting permission to apply for this grant.
Okay. I've got a motion, is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner West. Is there a grant to hire a staff to manage all these grants? Uh, oh yeah, that's that, that's what, uh, I mean, all these grants, it, it just takes more reporting, more staff, more you can go out and get all the grants you want, but can you manage them all? And uh, that, that's
And that's why I want to make sure and bring these out before the court for transparency, so we're all aware of what we're doing and what's coming up.
Alright. Any other questions, discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
We just want to say thank you and also I want to just record that for this, this whole radio project, it's a lot of meetings, a lot of research and Commissioner Brad and Scott Slade and myself, uh, got this special advisor, Scott Slade. Uh, we've all been working together on this stuff, a lot of hours, times we've been here. I know this gentleman up here is really educated in this stuff. So now when I read a question, I just go to him.
Thank you.
I do appreciate the cooperative work we've had in this project.
Item number eighteen, discuss and consider payment of economic development funds to Will's Point Economic Development Corporation for the Brazos trailer expansion. Uh, Pam Pearson's here.
Morning Judge.
Good morning.
So this item was approved previously, and I believe it was last summer we had discussed this. And I have now given you all the documentation that should be supplied for the reimbursement on this. And if you so choose, so if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Okay, I believe we, it had been approved through the Van Zet County Commissioner's Court up to eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And you're not asking for the whole amount.
That's correct. Ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
We've already yeah, we did, well, we need to motion to just go ahead and, and make payment to the economic development. Okay, motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaPrad. To go ahead and pay the ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider payment of economic development funds to Will's Point Economic Development Corporation for employee incentives for Midwest Cube Mills LLC.
Yes, sir. And so you do have the documentation that show the employees that are employed, that are, that reside within Van Zet County. And you show that they have been there this year, and if that's what you agree to. And if this is coming out of the economic development funds that you prior had approved, this will wrap up everything that we had agreements on previously, if you decide to move forward with this. And I just want to say on behalf of all the economic developers and our primary businesses, that we appreciate Van Zet County looking toward creating the jobs that we need to where quality pay can go to qualified employers. And I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Pam, because during this political environment, some don't think we're working on that. But thank you because we have worked very close with, with uh, with, with that and uh, and, and a great partnership, a great partnership. We're always looking, we have a special fund set up just for economic development of Van Zet County. Uh, I don't know what the total, we could run the total of what we've spent county, uh, countywide. Uh, Canton, Willpoint and everything, but I mean, and that was an expansion on Brazos, you know, the Brazos is an expansion. I mean, that, that company's going nationwide. Uh, and it's a great company. Uh, and I'm excited of what we've been able to do partnering with you guys. So thank you.
And I am as well. And you know, when you bring a business in and you're competing, as we've said in the past with a metroplex city, we don't have the funds, the county nor the EDC, none of us do. But when they see the partnerships that we have, it's something we're comfortable when you're standing at the table and you're saying, we, we do want to hear.
Right. And we have, we've set, we had a meeting last week with Pam and, and uh, in Will's Point. Uh, I, we want to partner with you guys. We'd love to have you here. Uh, and you know, we hope this is your home. But we would like to bring you in if we could, and we have competed and we've won.
Yes, we have. And, and it's thanks to, to your support, but I'd also like to say that we are entertaining some of these businesses. We try to do our due diligence, bringing in, because some of those are not a fit. We're seeing the growth countywide. And it's our jobs as economic developers and as cities to make sure that we are bringing the right growth to our communities and to work out.
Yeah, that's good. Susan, do I have a motion second?
No, no.
Okay. They, is there a motion to approve uh, what was that, ten, fifteen thousand? Fif- fifteen thousand for the employees. Uh, and it's the agreement we've already made with, this is just finalizing the payment too. And I, and I always want the check to go, instead of to the company, I want the check to go to the EDC.
Right.
And that's what, is there a motion?
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Pam. Thank you for the job you do.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, discuss and consider entering into contract with Trot Communications Group regarding radio broadband project for, for the American Rescue Plan funding. Uh, Commissioner LaPrad, you want, okay, go ahead.
Mister Barry Black with Trot Communications here with us today.
Okay.
As y'all know, we uh, went up for a request for qualifications and we awarded Trot on those qualifications to be the uh, engineering consultant for on the radio project. They have worked together with Grant Works and come to a contract that everyone's in agreement on, which I presented y'all. Uh, I believe it's in your book and various here that.
Any questions, you have. Okay, you may address the court.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I appreciate y'all taking time and uh, looking at our contract. We're uh, we're looking forward to working with you guys on this project. We've Trot's been in business for over forty years and our whole business has been land mobile radio consulting. And this is right up our alley. Uh, we understand that these radio systems are typically only excuse me, replaced every fifteen to twenty years. So uh, in a life cycle of a radio system like this, uh, a commissioner or a sheriff or somebody like that may only experience this one time in their career, depending on time. We do it every day. Uh, that's, this is our job and um, we're one hour away from, from Van Zet County. Uh, our office is at Irving. I live in Dallas. I got, it's fifty-eight miles from my house to get out here. So we're, we're able to easily respond and, and help you guys do this process. And essentially what we do is we represent you guys as a buyer of a high top-tier technology radio system. Uh, in this case, it's going to provide interoperability, uh, enhance that, enhance coverage. Uh, your officers and, and public safety uh, uh, organizations will have better coverage inside of buildings to respond and to support situations that may occur like bad weather or tornadoes or normal crime, let's say. So um, this is our proposal here. We've met with Chad. Um, we've talked to the sheriff, we, we've talked to quite a few, and we've come up with this scope of services and working with Grant Works as well. And um, so uh, we're looking forward to getting started and helping you guys get to the end of this and, and really in, increase your, your radio system and, and coverage and, and all that. So this, in a nutshell.
Okay. Any questions?
Please be calm, Brett.
It, it is longer than we thought it was gonna be. Uh, there's probably fifteen pages of appendices in there with, you know, interest and, and uh, Texas Code of Ethics forms and things like that. Um, and then of course, since it is a federal grant, uh, there are a lot of things that we'll have to work with Grant Works on, on the reporting. I think somebody mentioned earlier about, you know, managing grants. It, it does take work and time and that's, you know, there's, there's time put into our budget for supporting all that reporting. Uh, verifying that the work has been done for payment milestones. Um, you know, and then, you know, these radio systems are, are quite unique because uh, um, you know, you always want to, we, we write our RFPs, let me come back in a second. We write our RFP so all vendors can bid on this and you guys can, can evaluate those bids. And we'll come up with, working with you guys, uh, we'll come up with uh, the scoring criteria so that the selection of the vendor to provide this system uh, can be selected. It's not necessarily the lowest price. You know, you may not think that the lowest price can really perform because they're, you know, not in it. Don't have people in this area that can really uh, help you guys from a maintenance standpoint, long-term or installation, uh, things like that. So we'll write that, that RFP so that it has a, a scoring criteria in it, uh, price being one of them, of course. And uh, help you through that process in the selection and getting that vendor under contract. And this, this is really, we're, we're anticipating this is gonna be two RFPs because there's the radio system equipment and then there's tower infrastructure. Um, so four towers will be built, at least four towers, let's say, in the county. Um, and there's been some identified property already identified um, on where these towers could reside. And once the vendor's under contract, they'll be able to bless those locations and say, yes, absolutely, I can meet the performance spec that you put in the RFP using those sites, but we need towers that are three hundred feet tall or two hundred and fifty feet tall. And so then, at that point in time, we can then release the second RFP for the tower infrastructure. Um, and so, once those two vendors, and it could be the same vendor, but more than likely it'll be a radio vendor and a tower vendor, uh, will start their project. We will be involved heavily during the implementation phase to help shepherd you guys through that. Um, and that's really where the meat of the project is during that implementation. It could take, you know, years, let's say, to get in there. And the grant money is, is good for quite a bit, you know, a long time. So to get that spent, but uh, that's just kind of how, a little bit of how a project works in the different phases that we have here in our contract.
Okay. Any questions?
I was wondering, I should have asked you that, uh, Jed, will this include uh, uh, in the process of radios or backup?
Absolutely. So when you talk about public safety radio systems, you all want to, want to talk about resiliency and um, redundancy. Um, it's very important to have, there's certain parts and pieces of these radio systems that need to have a redundant list, um, device at different locations in the county. In the event, say a tornado came, came through, it took out one of these tower sites and your critical infrastructure equipment is located there, it could take out your whole system. Um, it would still operate in, in kind of a limping mode, let's say. Um it would still operate in in kind of a limping mode, let's say. But when you do the redundancy and you do it right, um your system, if it takes out a tower, you're going to lose a little bit of coverage over there, of course, but the rest of your system will continue to operate. And there's, you know, backup generators are super important, of course, if you lose power at the site. Um there's all sorts of things that are very important when it comes to public safety that we want to make sure that the design, the RFP calls out the requirements for that resiliency and that redundancy and that only in super extreme, extreme situations uh would you have an effect of your, your radio coverage for for public safety.
Any other questions?
I know you, you did this as a particular scope of work.
Yes, sir.
And I understand if the scope of work becomes more, that it could be an increased cost. But if the scope of work becomes less, if we decide we can't do something.
Yes.
Does your press come down?
Absolutely. So the way that we uh, the way that we've structured this is four phases. And uh let's just say for the first phase, that's the needs and requirements study. And that's where we meet with the stakeholders, uh and we get everybody on the same page on what the, the parameters of the system need to be. Um super important to get that squared away at the first, because once we start right, getting into phase two and writing that first RFP, all that information goes in there. Um but let's say, for instance, we, we've got a hundred and fifty-two hours in this first phase. If we get that done and it's only a hundred and thirty hours, that's all we're going to build. We bill on a monthly um time and materials, materials just being our time to drive out here, you know. But uh, so if we can come in under budget, this is not to exceed, not to exceed. Um you'll see that there is a contingency in there, fifteen percent, we typically do that. And that contingency is only for scope change. Let's say, for instance, one of the neighboring counties up to the northeast, that's BHF right now decides they want to join in with you guys on the system and they would pay for putting a site in their county or sites, let's say. And y'all agree that that's a good idea and y'all want to proceed with that, that would have been a change of scope and this contingency money um could be used for something like that to, not, not to pay for their whole system, they'd have to come with some money too if they needed our support. But there's always going to be, once, when two counties are sharing a radio system, there is some common equipment possibly. And this is not being considered right now, but that's what the contingency would be for, a major scope change. We hope to come in under budget of all these things.
And uh, Grant Works, but Mr. Bass has reviewed this and he's good with the, since he's, he's managing our grant, he's good with all the.
Yeah, he sent an email yesterday.
I've spoken to him many times and yes, we are all on the same page.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we uh approve the contract.
Okay, got a motion to approve the contract with Trot Communications regarding the radio broadband project from the American Rescue Plan funding, is there a second? Second, got a second by Commissioner West, any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider solicitation of bid and uh for road and bridge fuel for the contract year of June the first, twenty twenty-two through May, through May the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, Ms. Hill?
Uh this is just uh my office coming to the court to get permission to bid your, which one is it, your road and bridge fuel?
Yeah.
We start that process.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider solicitation of road and bridge materials for the contract period of May the first, twenty twenty-two through April the thirtieth, uh twenty twenty-three.
Uh we need your permission just to get those bids ready, we will, we are preparing them right now. And each of you will get a copy of the bid, if you will review that bid and make any changes necessary, we'll get a date on the email. And we get those changes and get that bid.
There a motion to go out for bid for the road and bridge materials?
Some.
Yeah, okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions, discussion?
Sandy, only thing I can think of on our constant, we're, they're still working remote. So we'll have to make sure we email that one gentleman. I'll get to the information if y'all don't have it left in mind. Remember, we got the bond, we didn't get the bid back and had to open it up again last year. Uh he stood up, which I would have, we should, didn't notify him by email. He, he didn't know about it because the ma- the males were in one place and they're all working somewhere.
From home?
Probably so. Probably so.
Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider solicitation of the office supply bid for the contract period of May the first, twenty twenty-two through April the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I think it may be a change coming.
We uh, I just want to visit with the court. My office has numerous complaints on office supplies being high and that they have to purchase from our vendor, vendor that was awarded the bid. With that said, uh Ken Paxton, the Attorney General of Texas, has an opinion, take the O three, O three by the, I placed it in your book. Just in short, the summary says that we, the the single purchases up to fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars requires us to go out for a bid. But they have since changed that to say per department. So I ran a total this year on what we actually spent on office supplies with our awarded bidder. And the county spent forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars last year. So the bidding requirement is not required because of course, no, no department within Van Zandt County spends up to fifty thousand. We do use bidding on office supplies for convenience, because they do have, you know, normally the, right now, the vendor we had sends a rep around and she can take the orders and then the orders are delivered to each department. But I have had some concerns from other departments that are wanting to change that. So I'm just putting that out there for y'all to make a decision as to whether you want to bid office supplies.
So the board is going to change it too.
Be, would just be where you want to purchase your supplies.
That would be cheaper.
We already, the bid does not include copy, paper, printing, furniture, it's just strictly pens, pencils. So um there's just a lot, wider variety of places to buy office supplies. And they are, and nothing against the bidder we have, but they are, we can purchase those supplies.
And they do it on, I mean, I assume a lot of it could be done online. Using a, using a credit card, we're chasing wheels down this week, trying to find out who, who, who purchased with a, with a card. Yeah, I mean, that's going, I mean.
Come into play. It's strictly up to the court, we have the bid ready, I mean, we can put it out. Uh but I just wanted to present it to you because it, I've had several departments come to me and ask why, why, why?
Okay. Any questions for Sandy? Is there a motion? Oh, whoa, motion.
Is this a correct motion to go out for the, your?
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you need to make a motion to go out for bid or you make a motion not to go out.
Motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, story right, our plan will have to be notified, uh you know, but their bid will be ending and we won't be renewing if you choose to.
Yeah, and I would like to have that in motion if we, if we're not going to go out for bid motion to just not go out for bid.
What the court wishes are at this time.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, there's situations where we actually got a couple of county offices because we purchase something that is literally ten percent. Situation with your benefits there, just three, four times, if we could buy Walmart, if we could buy Amazon. On the state grounds, so.
The only thing we have to be caution on is some of those Amazon purchases charge a sales tax. Some people go to Walmart and go, use your sales. If you do this, the employees, the, the department heads are going to ha- I'm not going, I will not approve any sales tax on office supplies. If they get, if they get charged for sales tax, I think the court should make the department head pay. Because right now, we don't pay. Right now, with, with our current bidder, they know, you know, they have our taxes in compiled, it's there. And just this week, I had to approve numerous Amazons and Amazon invoices that had sales tax on it and we're not supposed to be paying sales tax.
Same degree of official Amazon county income, you know.
This was the official Amazon account. It was the chief deputy's car. We need to get that checked on. The sheriff's car, they can charge for the chief deputy.
We'll check it soon.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll work out, maybe we have to work out some sales tax on there. If I'm saying dollars, same says, we paid four, five, ten thousand more or something.
And the sheriff has a very good, uh if, if he chooses to do this, he has a very good form that he fills out for the credit card. And we need to, we need to get that form and share it, because you fill the form out, you staple a receipt to it and you get it to Ken. Immediately, you know, it's, because once you place an order, you get a receipt. And that way, maybe what happened this week with the credit card won't happen, we'll be able to pay.
Yeah, that's, that was something we developed with Sarah, just to comment on this, with a credit card, say they can walk in my door, every time they get the credit card. It's not that I'm trying to afford them to come over here, I'm trying to get a return of receipts. He will have a bad habit or something, I don't know, let's see if they'll even talk about it again. Here comes the bill and shit, oh, she just won't do this, time to have a look at it.
Took four hours, took four hours.
There's always some on there, I don't know who they are, where they come from, who bought it, we can try to verify that, so shit, that's what we're trying to do.
Did you find the two? Did you find the two that?
Yeah. I just want to know who bought, what you bought, when you bought, that's what we're trying, so we can make sure it's legitimate. If you don't, then we have to try to get that, that takes a lot of time.
Took four hours.
Yeah.
Took four hours.
And you know, I normally don't approve that credit card bill, I'm not going to take you, normally my assistant does, but she was out, let Susan talk, we understand. Oh, COVID has hit our offices. And so I did, and it was a good learning experience for me because I had to sit down and go through, you know, that bill and it, and it took me four hours to approve it. And I can't imagine how many hours it took Kenny's office just to do one bill for Van Zandt County.
Well, at the fore, we come up with, that took the trade off, I said, okay, I will forego you having four people on the credit card. We can have way, you let me go, you bought what, that's what I need to know. So that's kind of where we're at, we're pretty good for then. We still have a few, like, she told me we had one track down, why they tracked it down here, she didn't.
We, we actually had this call, the number on the card, I did. Sit on hold for about thirty minutes, finally figured out who it was.
Can you email us a copy of that form to all of our?
We, we, we talked about that yesterday about getting a copy of that and it's just certainly to everybody. That way, it keeps us in the know. We have to verify this purchase, if they can make anybody, if you can make anything.
So what's the pleasure of the court? Do you want to go out for bid or?
How many bids do you typically save from how many different vendors? And you're still able to purchase from that vendor if you so please?
Yes, you just won't have a bid pricing on them.
I think we can get things cheaper through the other way though.
You're just giving up your convenience for some of the, the offices.
But if you do go out for bid and you award a bid, you're obligated to buy from them.
With the exception of paper, furniture, printing.
But there's not too much of a discount on that bulk paper that we get from.
Most of our offices aren't ordering their copy papers.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so it's not part of the bid.
Okay. So what's a court's pleasure?
I'm going to make a motion that we not go out for bids for solicitation of office supply.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPret, any question, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-four, discuss and consider any local agreement between Van Zandt County Precinct One Road and Bridge and the City of Van. Uh Commissioner LaPret?
This is that same agreement I've done with Grand Swing, Fruitville and Edgewood. It just allows for us to work together for these projects and do my station sound. The City of Van has done approved it, if y'all some choose to do so, we'll have something on record and make the requirements come off. I'll make a motion to.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner LaPret, second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-five, discuss and consider setting speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour for Van Zandt County Road twenty-one thirty-six, Van Zandt County Road twenty-two nineteen and Van Zandt County Road twenty-four eleven in Precinct Two.
Yes, sir, this, as we grow, uh as a county and and more people are coming in from subdivisions coming in, uh the traffic has increased and they've certainly increased on these roads here in our under traffic study. So I've made the motion that we set speed limit thirty-five miles an hour on these roads.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion?
Sure, let's go to do this countywide.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-six, discuss and consider replat of Lot Nine in Forest Springs Estate in Precinct Two under subdivision regulations, chapter ten, revision and cancellation of plats, section ten point one, subdivision H one.
Yes, sir, this is, this was on the agenda last week, we had some discussion about it. We uh tabled it until we could talk to an attorney, our attorney and see what we need to do, but uh we did talk to Mr. Bass and the, we've got this all covered under our present subdivisions uh under H one. During regular term of commission, the commission must permit the revision of subdivision path. If it showed in the commission's report, the revision will not interfere with the status rights being owner of the part of the individual land. And I would have went out there and reviewed bids, looked at the property, it's not going to affect anything in this little old, old subdivision back in nineteen sixty-nine. So I asked the court to approve this.
Got a motion?
Yes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-seven, discuss and consider approval of Silver Springs Estates in Precinct Two.
Yes, sir, this is, this is a subdivision that the, the owner has complied with every rule that we held and submitted all the documents and I make the motion to approve this.
How many lots is that? One looks like.
Nine, nine lots.
Okay. That's a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-eight, discuss and consider approval of Lindsay Holdings and uh approval of Lindy, Lindsay Holdings in Precinct Two. Item number twenty-eight, discuss and consider approval of Lindsay Holdings in approval of Lindsay Lindsay Holdings in precinct two.
Yes, sir. This is another subdivision that the lots, the lots are actually over five acres, but it triggered the subdivision rules and regulations when he built the road into it. And so I've been out there and he has, I've looked at this and he has complied with all the documentations that's required by the, our subdivision regulations. So I've made a motion that we approve this.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton. Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner West. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-nine, discuss and consider approval of plat revision of legacy oats in precinct three.
Yes, sir. This is just a name change is all it is. And so they have applied for a plat revision and paid their initial fee. And once you, once and after the court approves this, they'll pay their final fee. And they have all the replat showing the new names. I'm making a motion to approve the revision.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirty, discuss and consider approval of meal acres in precinct four. Yes, this is a new subdivision. There are six lots. All the lots are over five acres. And all of them face on either to a county road or state road. And so they're actually from our subdivision regulations, but they have gotten us all of our information as far as our requirements for, as far as our on-site sewer and and water and all that, they've got all that through. Okay, have a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirty-one, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. Yeah, the budget amendments before you. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment, budget amendment? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Makes me wonder, have y'all looked at them before now? Got a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir. Okay. Oh, one of them back here, I'm not real sure what it is, but it's moving money from miscellaneous to that A R P thing. Is this for grant work? What, what is this?
What is the thing for grant work?
I thought it was four sixteen instead of sixty-one. Am I wrong?
This was the figure that ground work gave me.
I thought contract you had said four sixteen and this is four sixty-one, so I'm not sure, but.
What happened was I had to go in, I'm sorry, I had to go in and do the Florida report on January third, first. And that reporting is different. Normally, we only report expenses, but with this A R P funding, we have to go in and put the figure in when we enter into a contract. So we had to, you know, the contract is in, so in order to match our labor funding, you have to give the income or pay the money. This was the figure we're putting on the expense for.
And is that, that's the report that they said due January the thirty-first? And you work and work and work, you get it put together in five days or four days before thirty-third. They said, you know what, just regard that, that's not required. But it already been sent in. Okay, you can make a motion of four sixteen or four sixty-one, whichever is latest, whatever the contract states. Because the contract was what was approved. Yeah. Is that your, is that your? That'd be my motion. Your motion is to make payment per the amount of the contract? Yes. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
Hold on a second. Motion by Key.
Okay. That is supersede, okay.
I'll amend my motion to for Sandy to look at that and and do it according to the contract we've agreed to.
Motion by Key, Commissioner Pearson, and second by Commissioner LaPrada.
And Mr. West, what we did on that grant, in order for us to have in our budget, I just put the whole ten million in miscellaneous. So as we, as we begin to apply the truck, you know, we need to get the figure on it and get that money in cover.
Okay.
We'll have to start, we'll have to do an amendment and move it into the appropriate line items that they, they consider.
Yeah, I understand that. I just was concerned about sixty-one versus sixteen. I'm not sure. Okay, got a motion, second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirty-two, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government, approval entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, any comment down there? Oh, yeah, we we've already had two come in and it's only the second, so we did pretty good. But missed number thirty-one. Maybe he didn't. Anyway, I make that motion to approve it. On thirty-one or thirty or what? Okay. Okay, we're on the reports. Thirty-two. Is that, and he made a motion. Okay, is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Milton? Yeah. Okay, any questions, discussion on the reports? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now, let me go back. Did I miss something? Okay, because I'm thinking, I don't know what I missed. Okay, check and yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay, that concludes it. Item number thirty-three, is there a motion to adjourn? Got a, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada. Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We are adjourned.